Excellent. Good evening. At 6:00 PM, September 28th, 2022, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this is being televised live on local channel 18. And if we all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is, anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann. You'll have three minutes to make a comment. All right. All right, I'm going to ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. Okay, ZB A members George Ganzenmuller, Charlie Reedy, and Bob Cagiano were absent tonight. Scott's going to recuse himself from the first two hearings, so sitting on the first hearing, we have four regular board members as well as Sharon. So Sharon, would you read the first continued hearing, please?
Thirty-nine Kim Path. Owners Richard J. Bello and Amy M. McDonald Bello request a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a raise and replace of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 and Pompanesett Overlay zoning district, map 117 parcel 91, Mashpee Mass., September 14th, 2022, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicants, Richard and Amy Bello. As noted in the hearing notice, we are here for thirty-nine Kim Path, raise and rebuild under section 174-17.1. We are located in the Pompanesett Overlay District. The lot itself, I'm sorry, the structure is non-conforming in that it fails to meet the front yard setbacks from both Shore Drive and Kim Path. So it's one of those unique corner lots where it needs to meet frontage on both sides. So we are non-conforming, the existing structure is non-conforming in both those areas. The side yard setbacks are conforming, and they will continue to be conforming with the proposed project. So, under the 174-17.1, we need to show to the board that there will be no new non-conformities, and there will be no new non-conformities. We are going to be enhancing, making better the two existing non-conformities, or the existing non-conformities on both sides. So we're coming closer, further away from Shore Drive, further away from Kim Path. So, lot coverage will be under the 25% that's allowed in the Pompanesett Overlay District. The project is consistent with other projects that have been approved by this board on Kim Path. Also, 123 Shore Drive, which is across the street from this project, which was approved by this board in 2019. So, as I said, consistent with the, with what's been approved by this board before. Again, this, the existing house was built sometime in the late 80s, early 90s, so we'll be, you know, creating a condition that is a building code compliant with present-day standards. This project was approved by the Conservation Commission. So in that regard, you know, with the improvement of the existing non-conformities, the approval of conservation, the, going from a building code non-compliant structure to a building code compliant structure, we feel that, you know, this will not be substantially more detrimental to the, to the neighborhood. As again, as I said, it's consistent with other projects that have been built, you know, and approved by this board. So the only, the only real outstanding issue I, I see is more of a building code issue as opposed to a zoning issue, and that is the flood zone issue. And David's comments show that the property is located within the flood zone map, the 2014 map, it's within that. So, we're talking about whether or not this project can have a basement or not have a basement. The applicant, and with me tonight is Tom Bunker from BSS Design, who can answer any specific technical questions. But we've filed for a letter of map adjustment, which will allow, which FEMA will remap the lot, locus as I understand it, to show that the structure is not in the flood zone. And that would allow the building permit to be issued with the building of, with the basement, as I understand it. And David can correct me with, if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding. So what I would suggest to the board, if the board was inclined to approve it under your standard of substantially not detrimental, that they condition the project on the letter of map adjustment. If we don't get the letter of map adjustment, we would have to come back before this board with a modification of the plans to show no basement. Because otherwise, David would reject the building permit, and we wouldn't be able to build it anyways. So that would be my suggestion for a condition, if the board and the building commissioner are satisfied. Because as it stands right now, we need to get that letter. We can't get the building permit without that letter. It's been applied for, we're hoping to have it soon, and, you know, with, with the letter, we believe that the project as proposed can be approved and built. Again, if it's not, if we don't get the letter, they determine it's still within the flood zone, come back before this board for a modification with the, showing no basement.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I, I have no issues with anything but what you just spoke about.
Same.
Anybody else?
I'll vote last.
Okay. You know how to make the proper.
Yes. May I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you okay with this, David? Knowing that there is outstanding issues in town already with basements in flood zones?
Well, I mean, the way Chris presented it, I'm, I'm all right with what, how he presented that. My, I just want to be upfront in saying, when this, when this building permit is applied for, with a basement, I have 30 days to either approve it or deny it. And if I don't have that letter from, from FEMA, I have to deny this property. So, so the clock will be ticking when it is.
So you're aware of the.
Even, even when this, you know, what special permit, if you choose to give a special permit, that's, what's that, two, two years maybe?
Yeah, two years. So my suggestion to my client would be they would not submit a, a completed application to the building department to start that 30-day clock, clock until they have that letter. So, and I don't, I mean, from what I understand, you know, this isn't going to be something that comes, you know, two years down the line. It's supposed to be, you know, according to everybody that I've talked to on the project, it should be relatively quick. So, there's no fill proposed with this letter, so that usually makes it a little bit less time-consuming from FEMA.
So you're not going to put any fill on it?
There is no fill proposed for this project.
No fill proposed in your FEMA application?
That is correct. That is correct. And I, you know, I know that the town has, you know, proffered, you know, regulations regarding fill and things like that, but, you know, as, as the board knows, some of those have been rejected by the selectmen, so there's nothing, there's nothing about this project that does not comply with existing town regulations.
So the only thing you're asking FEMA to do is to remap?
That is correct. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments, anybody? Sharon, would you like to read some of the?
All right. This is from Dave Morse regarding thirty-nine Kim Path. According to National Flood Hazards Layer Manual, this properties of these, it referenced the 44 Pompanesett Island 2, these properties are entirely within the flood zone, and the proposed basements cannot be allowed in new construction. Board of Health, the raise and replace of the dwelling will also require an asbestos and aroma correction prior to approval of the demo build permit. Permit for the location change of the septic tank has been pulled. Conservation, this project has been approved by the commission. And I think that's it.
Okay, Evan Holder, I don't know the date of this. You know what, it's from September 14th, and it says thirty-nine Kim Path, Board of Health comments, the floor plans depict four rooms that meet the Board of Health bedroom definitions.
I think the, the septic is sized for four bedrooms, correct? The septic, four bedrooms?
So it's four bedrooms allowed on this?
Right. It's, the bedrooms are, we're not making any increase in the number of bedrooms that are currently existing, which I believe is four.
Okay. Any more comments, you know? Well, sir?
Says bedroom four right there, so.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any comments? All right, seeing none, Ron, do you like to make a motion?
I would. Like to make a motion that we issue a special permit under section 174-17.1 to Richard J. Bello Jr. and Amy, Amy M. McDonald Bello of thirty-nine Kim Path, under, no, sorry, thirty-nine Kim Path, to allow for a raise and replace of existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a single, on a new single-family dwelling. Jesus, I, been a long day. Why don't I start off? I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit under section 174-17.1 to Richard J. Bello Jr. and Amy M. McDonald Bello of thirty-nine Kim Path. Said special permit is to allow for the raise and replace of existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 and Pompanesett Overlay zoning district, map 117 parcel 91, Mashpee Mass., with the following conditions. One, the board determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Law 48, section nine. Two, plot plan existing conditions and demolition, proposed house reconstruction, reconstruction of thirty-nine Kim Path, Mashpee Mass., prepared for Amy and Rich Bello, scale one inch, heels 20 feet, date July 27, 2022, drawn by RAR, checked by TB, job number 21180, revisions added zoning requirement table, August 1st, 2022, drawing number B29-49, prepared by BSS Design Engineering Surveying, stamped and signed by Thomas J. Bunker, registered professional landscape surveyor. Three, landscape plan, prepared for Bello residence, thirty-nine Kim Path, Mashpee Mass., scale one inch, heels 10 feet, date July 27, 2022, prepared by Yarmouth Port Design Group, designed by Andrew Garley, registered landscape architect. Four, house plan, prepared for Bello residence, thirty-nine Kim Path, Mashpee Mass., job number 2208, date July 20, 2022, scale as noted, drawn by JM. A-1, lower level plan. A-2, first floor plan. A-3, second floor plan. A-4, front northeast elevation, right northwest elevation. A-5, rear southwest elevation, left southeast elevation, prepared by Architect Associates. Five, condition, all town department comments read into the record, and continuing, specifically including but not limited to the Board of Health and FEMA, which is, that wouldn't be a, read into the record. Also, condition, any plans, any changes to plans will require the applicant to return to the board, including but not limited to the fact that the applicant must seek and obtain a letter of map adjustment from FEMA, and if in fact he is unable to, he have, he would have to return to this board to seek further approvals.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, Sharon seconds. Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ron?
No.
Okay, passes four to one.
Thank you.
I guess that's what happens when you get tired.
Okay.
It's been a long day.
All right, let's sign this stuff off. I got more stuff. I got one note.
Old age is tough.
Oh my God, I'm dying.
The top of the timid.
Hmm?
Old age is timid.
There you go, sir.
Check the report.
I will do so.
Sorry. Is it? Chris, isn't it? Yeah. Sharon's name is not on there. She'll have to.
I think you have to fill your name in, Sharon.
Charlie's 16 years old. 16 months. Not really his birthday. At least he's celebrated every month.
Wow, I'll tell you. I'm so tired.
Okay.
Ready? Oh.
Stamp that, I'll send it. Very good. Okay.
Got that done?
Am I going to? Mary Ann, I've got extras here. And there's that. Okay, Scott's out on this one, so Brad, you'll sit in on this one instead of Sharon. Sharon, would you read the first new hearing?
Forty-four Pompanesett Island Road. Owner Adam J. Dexter requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and replace it with a new single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 23, Mashpee Mass.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the owners of forty-four Pompanesett Island Road, Adam Dector. I am submitting to you some updated architectural plans, so if the board were inclined to approve the project, these would be the ones that would need to be referenced in the decision. There's no substantive changes, just some details on some of the, some of the numbers and dimensions. But again, nothing substantive from what was submitted to the board previously. With me tonight, Darreev Nicolau, who is the architect on the project, and Mark Dibb from Cape and Islands Engineering, who would be able to answer any technical questions if the board should have any. Again, this is a raise and replace of an existing single-family structure, so we're seeking a special permit under 174-17.1. We are located in the R3 zoning district, and the lot is non-conforming as to both size and frontage in the R3. The lot conforms to all current zoning setbacks except for 174-33, setback to wetland. So in all other respects, this is a conforming structure except to the setback to wetlands. The existing, the proposed structure will continue to meet all current setback criteria, so there are new, no new non-conformities being proposed. And the setback to wetland will be, there'll be a betterment of that of approximately four feet, so we're making that a better situation. So again, existing structure conforms to all setbacks other than the wetlands. The proposed structure will meet all setback requirements other than the wetlands, and the wetlands will be, will be making that situation better. So in that regard, I would suggest that the, you know, the project would be substantially, would not be substantially more detrimental than what exists today. We are looking at a 1970s-era structure and replacing it with a new structure that will be building code compliant. Again, this redevelopment is consistent with the properties that are on both sides of this project, as well as to the rear, across the street of Pompanesett Island Road. Pictures were provided as part of my written materials if the board wanted to see what the, the adjacent properties look like. But again, we're consistent, this redevelopment is consistent with those projects. Also, and importantly, I would suggest, the project was approved by the Conservation Commission as, as you were looking at it. So the same, same plans, the project was approved by Conservation Commission. So the only issue, much like the prior, is that we are seeking a basement in the flood zone, so we have filed for the, the CLOMRF, so the map adjustment, but with fill. So there is fill proposed in this particular project. The application was proposed back in, put before FEMA back in August, so we're expecting, they were actually expecting a, a written decision from FEMA by today, but we just, we're still waiting on it. So again, I would ask the board to condition the project like we did for the last project, you know, that if FEMA says that there's, that we're still within the flood zone, that we'd have to come back before this board. And, you know, again, I know, you know, there is fill proposed, but there's nothing in the bylaw that prohibits somebody from bringing fill in. Again, that was something that was proposed to the town, and it was rejected by the selectman. So there's nothing at town meeting coming up that prohibits fill from being put on a lot and having a letter of map adjustment.
Okay. I'm not even sure why the fill is being brought up. What's the downside of the fill going to?
I can have Mark Dibb, right, Mark Dibb answer that?
Good evening. Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering. From an engineering perspective, I think the fill is actually an important part of the project. It's relatively minimal. If you look at the finished floor, existing finished floor of the house, right now it's at 12.5. The new finished floor is less than 13.5. I think it's like 13.3. So it's less than a foot. There's definitely areas of the site where the fill is only from zero, zero to a foot to two feet on the site. And it's actually, if you're gonna properly design this property, this fill, to get it out of the floodplain is essential for spending money on a project like this, a house that's 40 years old. You know, we're very confident that this is the proper design, it's a flood-resistant design, just everything that's going on, sea level rise, climate change, all that stuff, you know, and since it's only a foot, two feet, you know, it's a very proper design for the project. The neighboring houses, I mentioned this house, the finished floor is at 13.5, the neighboring houses, one of them's at 15 on one side, one of them's at 14 and a half on the other. So this is still the, you know, the low house on this, on the property, or in that area.
Is it taking it out of the flood zone? Is that what's happening?
Correct. Correct.
And again, it's been approved by Conservation.
Have you received any verbal feedback from FEMA?
We've had some just procedural-related requests. They have a very strange natural heritage documentation request, endangered species, we're not an endangered species, it's not mapped. But nothing, nothing formal, or that, we do not have the final letter yet, but we, we are hoping for it this week based on what we've received for other projects. Again, it's, it's a building code-related item, but.
Okay. What do the opponents say about putting fill in there?
Well, what, this is a little, this is different from the prior one with the Loma. The Loma is a yes or no answer.
Excuse me?
The Loma, for the, for the one we just did was thirty-nine whatever.
Kim Path.
That's basically a yes or no answer. This is more complicated. They, they, there's a lot of engineering that has to be satisfied. How you build it, you got to document it very well. I don't know if they actually do the TB-10 bulletin, you know, are they gonna be pumps in this basement? This is a lot more involved than, than just asking for a Loma.
So in listening to Evan submit to, well, he actually was on vacations, it was done by written form, he was in Orlando, but when the selectman took up the filling in the flood zone aspect of, you know, the new FEMA regulations, what was going to be brought to town meeting, the conversation that was had was, the reason why the town wanted to not have fill in the flood zone was, this is, I think, and I can't put words in Evan's mouth, that's not my goal, but, was because of whenever you fill in a floodplain, possibly you're now taking whatever that water would have taken that flood area and putting it somewhere else, which makes, stands to some reason, not always, but if you were gonna put a gallon of water here and you fill that area, the gallon of water's gonna go somewhere. Now whether it goes to your neighbor or whether it goes out to the, I don't know, but that was one of the things that was presented to the selectman in a conversation, and I know, I believe that that is not going forward, that article. I think they're gonna maybe revisit it, I don't know, that's not my business, but I can understand why aspects of it, some of that article is gonna move forward, I think, but not the fact of filling in the flood.
Correct.
And I understand there's a lot of people in town that could be impacted by that decision. I get it. But what concerns me is, is, and I was the one that voted against this and one other applicant six months ago, and that was, not an engineer, don't profess to be one, but a prior town engineer said, hey, you're filling in a flood, in that case, it wasn't a flood zone, it was a coastal bank, okay? You're filling in a coastal bank, and that creates a, you know, a scenario where that water that was gonna go there, was going somewhere else. Now we're dealing with a floodplain. And so to me, that theory stands up still, but I'm certainly not FEMA.
Right.
And so I'm not trying to sit here and trying to be FEMA, but I can tell you, as only one member, you saw me vote against the last application, I would not be in favor of this application, I'll tell you why. I, I know in this town, we presently have a basement that's in a flood zone that's being dealt with, and that's a different, different reason and different criteria, but I think this is a big enough issue that it should be dealt with prior to the application coming to the board.
Well, it is. It's dealt with, with the Conservation Commission. Conservation, I, I don't want to hearken back to that other project, but there was a disconnect between what the Conservation Commissioner approved and what the en, town engineer approved. And, you know, again, this is zoning board, FEMA's building, is a building code issue, building in the flood zone, putting a basement in the flood zone, Conservation's in charge of the wetland resource areas.
Well, Chris, if it wasn't this board's purview, why, why would, if I'm asked to make a motion, why would it be based on, why would be one of the criteria being a FEMA rezone, redoing of a map? Which shouldn't even be included, because you'd deal with it, because it's a building issue.
Well, only because if it's reject, if, if it's rejected by the building department, we're just saying we have to come back before you.
I wouldn't even have to say that.
With new plans.
Well, technically, I wouldn't even have to say that, if you think about it.
You wouldn't have to, I would just have to come back with a modification.
My, my point is this, if Conservation doesn't approve, if Board of Health doesn't approve, quite commonly, this board can condition. I think that a FEMA application, especially this one, when you're talking about filling in a flood zone, which is different than the actual, the, the prior application, and I agree with what David's saying, this is even taking it to a higher level, right? Where it's, it may be not just yes, no, it's gonna be possibly a condition, and how the fill's done, how replication of the storage capacity, who knows? And so I think this is really taking it to the next level. But that's just me, I'm one member.
Well, I guess the, the question would become, you know, if FEMA were to approve the, the application, you know, would this board approve the project, condition upon whatever comments they would make within that letter?
Well, what if, what if they said you have to change the height of the building, you have to change this, you have to change that? We don't, as one member again, I, I, that's like saying, you know, an open-ended yes to a, to a question that I just can't say.
Right. Well, I think, you know, Mark can speak to this, but it sounds like, you know, they're far enough down the road where this, this would have come up already.
I, I don't comprehend your statement.
That if, that, they applied for this in August. If there was something like that, where there were some comments about raising it, that they would have been, they would have been raised by FEMA well before this meeting tonight.
I, I think that's presumptive. I don't, I don't believe that that, that may or may not be so. I mean, they may be another six months on getting back to you, who knows? FEMA can be slow, very slow. We all know, especially with what's going on in the world right now, right? They, they may be like backed up for the next like six months now, when you're talking about FEMA.
Well, I'll let Mark speak to that, I mean, he's been the one dealing with them.
I'd like to just speak to the floodplain issue real quick. There's two types of floodplains. There's, there's inland floodplains where exactly, it's like a tub, you know, if you fill that, that floodplain in, you're required to compensate for it somewhere else, because it's just like, if I fill a tub up and I jump in, it's gonna overflow. And there's performance standards in the Wetlands Protection Act. For land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is the floodplain we're dealing with here, within the entire Wetlands Protection Act, there are no performance standards. You're not required to compensate. You can't offset this, this one.
where there were some comments about raising it, that they would have been, they would have been raised by FEMA well before this meeting tonight.
I, I think that's presumptive. I don't, I don't believe that, that, that may or may not be so. I mean, they may be another six months on getting back to you. Who knows? FEMA can be slow, very slow. We all know, especially with what's going on in the world right now, right? They, they may be like backed up for the next like six months now when you're talking about FEMA.
Well, I'll let Mark speak to that. I mean, he's been the one dealing with them.
I'd like to just speak to the floodplain issue real quick. Uh, there's two types of floodplanes. There's, there's inland floodplanes where exactly, it's like a tub, you know? If you fill that, that floodplain in, you're required to compensate for it somewhere else because it's just like, if I fill a tub up and I jump in, it's gonna overflow. Um, and there's performance standards in the Wetlands Protection Act. For land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is the floodplain we're dealing with here, within the entire Wetlands Protection Act, there are no performance standards. You're not required to comment, compensate. Um, you can't offset this, this one foot of fill on this property, which I, I still believe it's the best design for the property, um, will not offset the level of the ocean. Um, it will not, you know, it, in this case, it's not gonna also affect the neighboring properties, as this one is still the lowest property around.
Have you ever seen FEMA deny an application like this, when you're using Phil, or, or condition it?
I have not seen it, and, um, again, it, this is not a zoning issue, so, you know, if it gets denied from FEMA, we're not building this as proposed. So I, I agree with, with Chris on that aspect. Um, but I stand behind the design. I think it's the proper design. If you're, if you're gonna rebuild a house on this property, it's, in my engineering experience, and I've been dealing with MEPA and all sorts of agencies on other projects, you know, sea level rises is happening. Um, we've been having to incorporate things like that, and what that does is just provides better flood resiliency for this prop, for this property at a relatively low cost. The, the Phil, you know, again, the, the finished floor of this house is only changing by, I can give you the exact number instead of a ballpark, we're going from 12.6 to 13.05, so less than a half a foot.
But if, but if FEMA says no to the Phil, then you have to redesign, or if FEMA says no to the map redesignation, you have to redesign.
Correct.
We'd have to, we'd just be without, it'd be a basement or no basement. That's the only redesign.
Yes, but like, like, like David said, it's not as simple like the app, prior applicant, yes, no, it's, it could be a condition.
It could take years, actually. Uh, so, again, so this might be jumping the gun to give approvals here, but anyways, is this, this basement doesn't seem like a full basement. It's only-
It is. Um, we've analyzed groundwater and things like that, the, the-
No, I mean, it's full basement, it's not the width of the house.
Um, I don't have the architectural in front of me, but it's, it's a significant section of the, the house.
And then what do we have, um, a, a partial on slab? Is it on slab?
The basement's on slab, yes.
Um, no, but, um-
The first floor is wood, wood framework structure.
I'm looking at this part of the structure here. There's no basement here.
This is actually exterior.
It's a porch.
Yes, so this is overhanging.
Is that on a slab?
That's on a slab.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So that's the main house and- All right, so you got the average, you got the-
Excuse me. Just for the public record, what is your name again?
Um, Dorive Nicolave, architect.
Yeah, and you're with what?
My, Nicolave Architecture.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
So the building height wi- without the coupler is exactly 35 feet?
It's less, it's, uh, two, one and a half, two inches less. From average grade.
All right, so, um, the, the basement's gonna be finished, I presume? I don't know.
I don't know.
You don't know, so it's not, that's, that's irrelevant, right, at this moment?
Correct.
All right, so, all right, so we got one, two and a half stories, is that what we've-
Correct.
Okay, above grade.
Yes, yes.
All right, okay. Um, again, uh, this is something, when I have an application in front of me, I have 30 days to either approve it or not approve it. If I don't have the documentations I need, I have to deny the permit. So that's, so everyone knows that's, that's where that goes. Um, and we'll have to figure out from there on how we, what we do, whether we come back here or not, is continued on one way. How, how everything is decided. New proposal is gonna have to be presented.
Yep. Okay. Bill?
Yeah. As, as one member, unlike the previous case, in this particular case, I would prefer to see the actual FEMA approval presented to the building commissioner prior to hearing this case. That's just my, my opinion. If, if you filed in August and you're waiting still, um, you can wait a little longer and, and you can continue this until you do get the approval, and then we can get a recommendation from the building commissioner as to what we should do going forward. That's just my opinion.
I like that. Comments? Jim?
No, I, uh, agree with the commissioner I just spoke.
Well, I, I certainly agree that it's FEMA's decision, but I like Bill's answer to it. To, and especially because of the Phil being added. Ron brings up some excellent points here.
I, I'm not far against any of this. I just want to make sure that we're on firm ground, no pun intended, to make sure that we-
That was good though. Brad, Billy, you didn't even mean to do that.
We can discuss over properly.
I understand. So I would be, uh, inclined to request a continuance of the October 12th meeting. I would just ask the board, is there anything per the site plan or design plans that we need to amend or adjust prior to next hearing? Or is it simply, are we simply just waiting on this FEMA letter?
All right, why don't we read the comments?
Okay. Um, building commissioner, I'm gonna reread, say 139 Kim Paff and 44 Pupitessin Island. According to the National Flood Hazard Layer Map, both of these properties are entirely, entirely within the flood zone and the proposed basement cannot be allowed in new construction. Water health, no comment permit for the location change of the septic stake has been pulled. Conservation, this project has been approved by the Conservation Commission.
I don't have any other issues or comments.
What is your sought relief, your, the relief you're seeking in reference to the well and setback?
well, it's already not conforming, so we're not seeking any relief, but we are, we are going from-
Well, you're seeking relief, you're not gonna seek any-
Right, I'm not, I don't need a variance because it's already not conforming, right. Yeah, we're going from, uh, I think 19, 19.7 to 23.4. So we're, we're making it a better situation by about four feet.
23.4.
So I guess, i- if the question is, if they were to obtain the letter and the letter included the ability or the letter and then the approval of the Phil, I would have no problem with the application.
Okay.
As one member.
Thank you.
David, you, you mentioned something about the height of the building. Did you have an issue with that?
No, with the, the rights to be at that height.
Two inches.
I would require, um, of course, uh, verification.
Right. That's, that's a tight one.
It is.
Stud that's a little long, right?
Yeah, I hope you don't make any mistakes. You're going within inches.
So what happens if they do an overlay in the roof someday? Right? Oh, my God.
It goes to the ridge. The ridge is, it's the structure.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. I'm just being faceti-, I mean, hello.
I know, I get it, I get it.
Wow.
We gotta be right there, though, yeah.
Brad?
I have to agree with Bill on this. I'm not comfortable until we know what FEMA has to say.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have any comments? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
So Marian, is the next meeting October 12th?
Yes.
And we have time on the slot, on the, uh, on the agenda for that, available?
I mean, I would ask that it be October 12th because you don't have a meeting at the end of October, and then you only have two more meetings after that. So, you know, hopefully we'll have, you know, we expect to all have that letter, you know, prior to, so I would ask for the, I would ask the-
Just keep calling the state, they'll-
Right.
So you're asking for an extension, Chris, until October 12th?
That is correct.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept Chris Corain's, um, request for an extension until October 12th in reference to Adam J. Decter, 44 Pupitessin Island Road, in reference to their seeking of a special permit under section 174171 and 174 dash 33 of the zoning bylaws to raise replays existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ron?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have the letter?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I have the sign, I'm doing it. I'll continue, it's right. I'll pass it out later. Sharon, do you have the next letter, by the way?
Uh, huh, I got the letter.
Okay, so, I think we're set. Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
502 Main Street, petitioner WCR Inc., D slash B slash A, Napa Auto Parts, Cape Cod, request a special permit under 174 dash 25E 12 and 174 dash 25G 6 of the zoning bylaws to allow for a change of use to operate a Napa Auto Parts store on property located in a C2 zoning district and light industrial overlay district, map 27 parcel 157, Mashpee Mass, owner of record, the 502 Main Street LLC.
Okay. Five regular board members will sit on this. Sharon, would you read the letter dated September 26th from Dunne and Corain?
Okay. Um, I have a letter from Attorney Corain dated September 26th regarding 502 Main Street, DHA refurbish. As you know, we represent the owner of the property referenced above. It is hereby requested that Wednesday night's hearing be continued to October 12th, 2022, as we are awaiting revised site plans. Thank you for your attention. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Curry.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ron seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay, that takes care of that. Okay. Nothing else? All right, Sharon, would you read the next new hearing?
26 Collins Lane, petitioner Joshua A. Gavoni, request a special permit under 174 dash 20 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the removal and replacing of an old house damaged by fire and rebuild similar structure on property located in R5 zoning district, map 36 parcel 3 dash 0, Mashpee Mass, owner of record, John W. Brooks, trustee of the Brooks 2003 trust.
Hi, my name's Josh Gavoni. Um, we're here with my wife Nicole.
Nicole Gavoni.
Yeah. I'm here to request a special permit to rebuild a structure where the home was damaged by fire, where we want to remove the existing structure and everything that's there and replace with a, a structure of similar size and in the similar location that it is already existing.
Okay. So I think, isn't the site kind of sloped to one side? Doesn't it slope down? I see.
Um, it's not really, it's, really, it's sloped to the front towards Collins Lane, uh, which is the road right across the way. Yep. But it's not really sloped one side or the other. I think the topographicals are in there that show it's sloped.
It's like 86 at the back and then, so now the 78 to 76 of the street.
So if it's a, if it was a fire, why are they here?
Cause it's been over, um, over two years since the fire took place.
It burnt down some time ago.
It burnt down like 2001, I think. There's actually been three fires there, I think, believe it or not, over the course of, of, since 2003.
In the bylaw, call it, call it-
So it's been a party house for a long time. It was abandoned years ago and there were people potted there and-
Was it still razor replace then? Is that why?
So, but, so the lot does not meet minimum requirements today.
It's a non-conforming lot.
So the fact that it burnt down longer than two years ago puts it into a, puts it into really a non-buildable lot?
I'm not sure if it was two years ago or not, but I think it was like two years-
No, but under the bylaw that they're referring to, you can rebuild under non-filing law based upon it burning down.
Yeah, no, I, that's why I'm wondering why they're here.
Because they have to, they have to apply for it based on that bylaw.
Let's go to 17420.
Non-conforming building, a structure destroyed by fire is subject to approval of Board of Appeals. So 17420.
17420?
I know it this afternoon.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Did you really?
I'm impressed, William. You had nothing to do. There it is. 174, the same conditions said fourth and 17424 of this chapter.
Either or. If I remember correctly.
7424.
So do we know what the non-conformities are?
What's that?
So what are the non-con, what, what things on the lot, if you were to build this house, are non-conforming? Do not meet the town's-
I don't think anything meets, doesn't meet the town setbacks. The only thing that's non-conforming, I think, is the frontage. It, it's 145.5 feet.
Size of the lot.
Okay, so size of the lot and frontage, but, but your side yard setbacks meet, front yard setbacks meet.
Yeah, all the setbacks.
Lot coverage is like really good.
Yeah, I think the lot coverage is plenty. I think it's over and above that.
Look at this lot coverage. Yeah, yeah. It's just the formality.
Right.
It really is.
Yeah, it's subject to approval of the board.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it. You, you're right, 100%.
Yeah, but of course, you have to work-
David has reviewed this as well.
Right.
David, right, am I correct? You read, you reviewed this.
Yeah, I have no issues. I have no issue.
I got zero.
This is a 20. Yeah, it's subject to approval of the Board of Appeals, subject to the same conditions as 74 and 17424.
I-
Which is like 10 pages.
Right.
I know.
Yeah. So there's no issues here, David?
No issues.
All right. Any comments from anybody in the board? Any questions, anything?
I have no issues. What's the other issues?
Anybody in the audience? Okay, Sharon, would you like to read some?
26, uh, this is from the building inspector. 26 Collins Lane, home was destroyed by fire and is being rebuilt. No issues. Water health, no comments. Septic plants have been submitted and approved. Conservation, not in wetlands jurisdiction, and that's it.
Okay, Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Wish, yeah, wish they were all like this.
I heard you ask.
I would like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Joshua A. Gavoni of 26, well, actually, he's not of, but he represents 26 Collins Lane under section 17420 of the zoning bylaw to allow for removing and replacing an old home damaged by fire and rebuild similar structure on property located in R5 zoning district, map 36 parcel 3 dash 0, Mashpee Mass, owner of record, John W. Brooks, trustee of the Brooks 2003 trust with the following conditions. One, board's term of the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under the Mash General Laws, section 48, 48 section nine. Two, existing conditions planned, 26 Collins Lane, Mashpee Mass, applicant Joshua Gavoni, 2 Pondview Lane, Mashpee Mass, dated August 15, 2022, scale inch, one inch equals 20. Job number 22 dash 484, sheet one of one, prepared by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, stamped by Deanna Bometree, registered professional land surveyor, number 49075, drawn by DWT backslash TMS, checked by DB. Three, proposed dwelling and subsurface sewer disposal system, plot plan 26 Collins Lane, Mashpee Mass, applicant Joshua Gavoni, dated August 16, 2022, scale one inch equals 20 feet. Job number 22 dash 484, prepared by Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, stamped and signed by Timothy M. Santos, civil number 45078, drawn by TMS, designed by TMS. Number four, building plan, Gavoni Home Design, 2 Pondview Ave, Mashpee Mass, project 18, dated 0808, 2022, scale quarter of an inch equals one foot. Sheet A1, north side elevation, A2, south side elevation, A3, east side elevation, A4, west side elevation, A5, first floor plan, A6, foundation plan, A7, basement floor plan, A8 through A- A eight through A eleven, cross sections. A twelve, first floor framing plan. A thirteen, roof framing plan. A fourteen, exterior door window schedule. Number five, condition, all town departments. Comments read into the record.
Do I have a second?
Heard you.
All right, Jim seconds. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paper, paper. Who's got the paper? My gosh.
Lots of praise.
Oh, yeah. All right. Twenty-two. Thank you. In order, sorry. What's this stuff? Thank you.
Coming back.
Paper, paper. Okay. Uh, Sharon, would you read the next one, please?
One eighteen Echo Road, owner, N G one eighteen Echo LLC, requests a special permit under one seventy-four dash eighty-two and one seventy-four dash twenty-five G thirteen of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of two solar canopies, approximately four, forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-five square feet with mounted solar modules and a paved asphalt block.
You don't need it?
For use as a contractor's yard on property located in the I one and our five zoning district and groundwater protection district, map nineteen parcel oh nine, Mashpee Mass.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Nathan Collins. I'm Senior Manager of Engineering with NextGrid. I am here on behalf of N G one eighteen Echo LLC. Uh, with me is Brandon Reali. He's our, with Atlantic Design Engineers. Uh, they are our civil site engineer for the property. Again, we're here in front of you seeking, uh, special permits for, um, impervious lot coverage as well as, um, use for a proposed, um, contractor yard and solar carport facility at one eighteen Echo Road. Uh, this particular lot is one of the, the last lots at the end of the road, uh, one, right at the cul-de-sac. Uh, it abuts the airbase and it abuts a residential property to the south. What we're proposing is to, uh, basically continue the use. Uh, the site's been used as a contractor yard for many years. We're looking to continue the use, but, uh, make it a little more user friendly. Uh, pave that area so we can, uh, store our equipment and, uh, both vehicular and, um, solar equipment uh, for short periods of time, uh, for different sites that we have on, um, under construction throughout, throughout the Cape and, and kind of southern, uh, New England. Again, s- the special permits are required for the use. Uh, it is an allowable use in the industrial district uh, through the issuance of the special permit. And we're also in the groundwater protection overlay district. Uh, so what triggers, uh, another special permit is, um, the, uh, going over the fifteen percent impervious area threshold, uh, for the site. Uh, we're currently proposing, uh, about, is it ninety?
Ninety-three thousand.
Ninety-three thousand square feet of pavement. Um, however, uh, we have designed, uh, three detention systems, all in compliance with, uh, the town's stormwater standards as well as the Massachusetts stormwater standards, specifically as it relates to sites within a groundwater protection overlay district. That's all I really have.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the, you're allowed to, what'd you say, fifteen percent impervious?
Of the lot, correct.
Okay, what percent are you actually proposing?
Fifty, fifty point two, I believe.
How many?
Five zero point two.
Okay. What did all these other?
Has this gone to, yeah, design review or plan review?
Yes, sir. We've been to both.
It's a plan review, yeah.
Because my concern would be, I'm sure you follow BMPs, right, but my concern is, is knowing now how strict the state is going to get in reference to stormwater management.
Mm-hmm.
And you're in a groundwater protection district. Um, very soon, if not already, we're already in a, in a standard that may exceed that, right? So we've got to be careful with that. I just want to make sure that some engineer for the town somewhere, somehow has looked at this. Because I'm looking at the last couple of pages and all I see is a lot of drainage and a lot of drainage calculations, which far exceeds my abilities.
Sure. Um, I mean, as, as design engineers, all we can go by is the, you know, certainly the current standards.
Yeah, I understand.
Sure. Um, and the town of Mashpee, specifically for the groundwater protection overlay district, has a requirement, uh, that you need to be at least three feet, uh, have three feet of separation from the bottom of any infiltration system and your, uh, your groundwater, which Mass, stormwater standards is, it's only two feet. And again, we, we have designed all of the facilities to meet that requirement.
So I guess my question would be, as you see this?
Yeah, plan review. I may have it here, but I guess my question is, what department would be charged with?
Here's my.
Making sure.
Right. So here's my thing, and I've gone some time ago to the town manager about this, and we've since had a town engineer, right? But we don't now have one. So applicants like this kind of get caught in the middle, okay, because of the fall. We don't have Chris Gallagher sitting there that would have reviewed this application or, you know, Charlie Rowley, who reviewed this application and would have said blah, 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 that, you know, that, that exceeds my knowledge, I presume most people's knowledge on this board. I can't speak for other people.
Certainly mine.
And I've actually designed drainage and I know Q factors and I can use AutoCAD and all that stuff, but I still wouldn't want to be the person looking at it because I'm not a registered engineer. So it's beyond me. My point is this.
So you believe it's the engineer's job?
I believe that there's two ways to handle this, in my opinion. The town should have its own town engineer that they can look at these applications and say thumbs up, thumbs down, and they finish the process without our town engineer. So when it comes to this board, the application, uh, Chris Gallagher sits there and says, I've reviewed it in this, or I've reviewed it in that. Or we do peer review and go outside of the marketplace, meaning outside of this room, and have someone take a look at it.
That would be my recommendation as well.
Because I don't, I mean, see, right now, we're in an interim basis, and that is, we do not technically have today a town engineer that used to sit in that seat to the right of her. We don't have that person. And it's a shame. I'm not questioning anybody's ability or lack thereof, or why we do or do not have one, but we don't. And so what concerns me is when I, as soon as I turn to the last couple of pages and you say, and I thank you for saying it, groundwater protections zone, I say, okay. And then I look at all the drainage and I look at, I'm sure you did drainage calculations and drainage studies to understand what size that, that, you know, retention area and all the rest has to be. And if you told me what those calculations were, I might understand them minimally, but not to the degree that someone has a stamp that went to college that could sit there and say, yes, no, maybe, we'll see. I can't.
Sure.
So, uh, and, and I, and I say, I'm sorry to you in that I wish we had that person. We don't.
Sure. I thought we had, I thought we had an engineer like Charlie Rowley now. Thought we had a new.
So there's somebody that does work for, to my knowledge, with, with planning department, but they're not really ours per se. My point is this, when I see design review comments that say the following, "Plan review, the applicant shall extend the Cape Cod berm along the driveway. The subsurface drainage shall be provided within the infiltration basin, and the NOX box shall be provided with contact information at the Cape." It tells me the following, that somebody didn't really go into this thing and spend some time, time and effort to understand calculations and understand the whole just of what's going on with these points.
I couldn't agree more.
I couldn't either.
And I, and I think we have to start somewhere knowing.
There's a reason why the town said fifteen percent. I'm not sure what it is. I'm, but I'm sure somebody does know.
And, and I gotta tell you.
Fifteen to fifty.
Yeah.
I'm scratching my head.
I think, because you're so close to, it's probably a very good use, right? It makes a lot of sense. For me, isn't it? As one member, it makes a lot of sense.
Sure.
The question I have is, is it designed in the best interest of our community? Not by an engineer that followed a book. I get it. I'm not saying you didn't. I'm just saying that, you know, uh, did you design it in the best interest of our community?
Sure. And I guess my response to that would be, we designed it in accordance with not only the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards book, we also designed it in accordance with the town of Mashpee's stormwater book.
But let me tell you.
So I'm not sure what other book we could.
Let me tell you how Charlie Rowley used to do it when he, when he worked with me and I'm doing things in this community.
Sure.
Wouldn't let me use the bottom of a basin and used to make me design a hundred and fifty percent on every single drainage structure. That was a town engineer for this town's, and you had to get by him in order to this board to say, or the planning board to say thumbs up. Hundred and fifty percent, and you couldn't use the bottom of a leaching basin. So I, I don't know how many people sat in your seat, and I turned to them and Charlie wasn't there or had a month or whatever it was. And I said, if Charlie were to look at this, do you think he'd approve it? And you know, every single one that I asked that question, which was only one or two, they'd say, he'd have many questions, I'm sure. My only point is, is you're designing to, to a standard that maybe the town, and I understand that standard may be in a book with the town, but there's probably several other things outside of that criteria that maybe this engineer that we would hire or that we would utilize would go above and beyond or somewhere around that aspect.
Sure. Yeah, and, and I have, I have complete confidence in our design engineer. I'm also a registered professional engineer. Um, I reviewed the drainage calculation, so I have no issue with you seeking a third-party review. I, I personally, I wish it was done sooner. Um, so.
And, and that's why I said, I'm sorry that you're in this scenario, because this is a board, we try to move things forward, but. And again, I'm speaking just me. As one member, what we want to do is keep it in the best interest of our community, number one.
Completely understood.
And so that being said, as one member, I think we need to have somebody take a look at this, these plans. And maybe that's the gentleman or lady that works for the planning board. I don't know. But somebody's got to look at the plans.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no comments anywhere. And it's disturbing.
No, it was designed so well.
That's very good. I'm impressed. Well, so the question that needs to be asked, I think, is, is.
I'm sorry. So we need a peer review?
Yes.
Along with a peer review, you realize there's going to be an invoice going to you.
Completely understood.
Which is, believe, correct me if I'm wrong, and I, and I may, I shouldn't even go.
It's standard practice for most towns.
Hey, you know, I pay them all the time. I get it. I get it. And that's why I don't, so that's.
How do we proceed? Do we, would you like to request a continuance so that we can?
Set up a peer review on this.
Peer review on this?
Um, yes, with the understanding that we're likely not going to receive a vote tonight, so.
I don't think.
Correct.
Do you want to see a proposal from an engineer? All right.
I'd, I'd like to see a, a few, if that's possible. Um, and I'd like to get, you know, that, I'd like to have some type of timeframe associated with that proposal.
I have a couple of engineers that I work with quite commonly.
Well, we certainly have the one that the town uses.
Right, and then maybe we, as if the town. So the, the one that the town's work, excuse me?
You know.
Yes. So if he wants to take it on then, but at that point in time, we just get a figure from him. If it, if it's okay with you, there's one that works for the planning board and works for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that way, we don't have to get out of growth and get any other pricing. He's very fairly priced. He, he does it quite often for our community, for the planning board, I think, right? And at that point in time, we'll get a price from him, I presume.
Do, do you want more than one?
It, it really, it comes down to timing.
Nobody's ever requested.
One's fine. It, yeah.
I mean, I could get you another one. The thing of it is, is that I'm going outside of protocol and it's so much easier that this is the way it's been done. And I would recommend to just follow that protocol.
Right. I guess I would, I would just ask, um, I'm assuming at no point that would be done by the twelfth, which I, is your next here?
Can't imagine.
I wouldn't think so. But I think the statement needs to be said here. If for some reason Petchy can't or doesn't have time or won't do it for whatever reason.
We can continue.
I have a couple of other engineers. If it's okay, I will present them to this board and maybe present these plans to them and get a number. And that, I just don't want it to go on for a month or two with being stagnant, because Petchy says he can't do it for whatever reason, then it hangs.
I, I appreciate that, because we have certain timelines that we need to meet, you know, for, um, DOER and our, our interconnections and everything, so.
Mr. Chairman, I make the following recommendation, if I may please. If Petchy cannot do it or is unwilling to do it, I will get you, I will present these plans to two other engineers and get two other prices in, in prior to October twelfth. Now, I don't know if the work will be done by the twelfth, but at least.
I'll call him personally. I know him. I know Petchy.
Okay, well.
Out of Plymouth, correct?
Couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
Got to be.
I think he is.
And he does represent the planning board, and I would.
Why don't we try for October twelfth? And if that doesn't work, we can always continue it.
Okay. Um, so I would, I would like to request a continuance till the October twelfth hearing. In the event that I can, you know, we can get a peer review completed prior to that, that hearing in a recommendation.
Ron, would you like to make a motion?
And your name is, sir, I'm sorry?
Nathan Collins.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept Nathan Collins.
Yeah.
Uh, request for an extension until October twelfth, so that the Board of Appeals can reach out to the town engineer or town consultant to either review the plans and/or will reach out and see if we can get additional pricing from another firm so that these plans can be peer reviewed. Set application is at one eighteen Echo Road. Owner is N G one eighteen Echo LLC, and they're requesting a special permit under one seventy-four A D two and one seventy-four twenty-five G thirteen of the zoning bylaw to allow for construction of two solar canopies of approximately forty-three thousand five hundred and eighty-five square feet.
Okay, uh, sounds good. We have a second. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Yeah, and that same, if I can name, David, are you, do you sit on the plan review or design review?
I'm a chairman.
Ah, so when something like this comes up that has drainage, I'm wondering if there's a way we can institute like peer review right then.
Just automatically.
See, so that we don't.
Probably something I dropped the ball. I probably should have brought it up then.
I'm not being critical. I'm just, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't even, I didn't even think of it.
Yeah, I turned to the last two pages and they're all drainage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's, yeah, that's, that's something that I should have, um, I better, should have been more aware of.
I got you. Yep, Sid.
I didn't really realize it until you brought it up.
Yeah, I'm sitting there and, and I do, I've drawn drainage studies, just it's not my thing, right?
Well, it's not mine at all.
Yeah, I mean, I've got.
I don't even look at this, that kind of stuff, you know? But, um, I'll be more aware of it.
Thank you.
Especially in the commercial projects.
Yeah, I mean, it's, um, and, and knowing what's going, groundwater protection district.
Right, exactly.
The, the whole thing is, they go, hmm.
Yeah, they, yeah, I mean, I know, Drew had no, no comments, so I didn't think much of it.
Yeah.
I had a bunch of other questions, but we never got that part.
Yeah.
I still don't understand how it's a contractor yard and you're putting up.
That's my bad, actually.
I don't know.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the next other, uh, excuse me, new hearing?
Six Jack Bond Road, owner is Catherine Leados, requesting appeal of the building commissioner's decision under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section eight and Section fifteen. Applicant maintains that the lot is buildable, buildable to one seventy-four dash twenty-four A of the zoning bylaws without the need for relief from the zoning board of appeals, and that the proposed accessory apartment complies with one seventy-four dash forty-five point four on property located in an I three zoning district, map ninety parcel thirty-one Mashpee Mass.
Hi. Hi. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant in this appeal, Six Jack Bond Road. I'd just like to make one point of clarification on the hearing notice. The, uh, the bylaw section should be, um, one seventy-four twenty-one A, not twenty-four A. I don't think there is a one seventy-four twenty-four A. So I think there may have just been a typo on, on, with the application, but, um.
So instead of twenty-four A, it's?
Twenty-one A. Twenty-four A. I think the hearing notice said twenty-four A. Okay.
Is that an issue?
Mary Ann, is that an issue? No.
No.
Good enough for me. Thank you. And if, I did submit a letter to the board. Um, I don't know if the board has had a chance to review that, but it goes into, it does reference twenty-one. but it goes into, it does reference 21A.
So it should be what?
It's not an accessory, it's protected, and I always...
Right, and I think there's another form that cites the bylaws, and I think that one was, that cited the correct bylaw provisions the other page. So I don't know why I got, why my, why there was a typographical error there.
So what are we looking at? What, your bylaw?
So, if I could get some background...
Could we ask in the future that the plans get a little bit bigger?
Yes, well, that's why I bring the big one.
Yeah, but I can't, it's a distance thing on that one.
No, definitely. So absolutely, I try to get this big, I mean, the zoning board guidelines are 11 by 17. But certainly, we can try and get it bigger if we want.
I'm gonna go buy one of these tonight.
But I'm not sure it's necessarily the most important issue. You know, they applied for a building permit to build on a non-conforming lot. The lot is located in the R3 district, it only has 27,730 square feet. There was also an accessory apartment as part of the application, go ahead.
Is there a building on there now?
No, it is a vacant lot.
Okay, and it's in R5?
R3.
Okay, what's the minimum lot size?
Forty... Forty thousand.
And it's got...
27,730 square feet.
Okay.
So...
It's not really buildable, is it?
Yes, it is, it's buildable under the 21A and the grandfathering provision of Chapter 40A, Section 6.
Oh, because it wasn't in...
Common ownership.
Common ownership.
Yeah, but you gotta give us, there's a lot of, we gotta go back and look at some deeds.
Well, there was a lot protected, there was a lot, there was a lot status protection letter that was filed with the, with the Building Department in 2018, which I submitted as part of my letter to the board. So that work has been done, it wasn't done by any, it was done by Paula Kelly, I found her, who's a very qualified attorney, but that was submitted, so...
And whoever you submitted it to at that time accepted that as...
I, my understanding would be, I mean, it wasn't me who submitted it, but...
I don't know if we want to get it, but so just sending a letter to someone, whether whoever it was back then, does not mean that that someone says thumbs up to the letter?
I suppose not, but they rely on that, the building commissioner relies on that letter. Because they don't do the research, they rely on the attorney and the title examiner. And if they say it's a, my understanding is, David could correct me if I'm wrong, how he approaches those letters, but we submit them all the time and if, you know, we make, we give an opinion that it's buildable and it's not merged, I think generally David accepts that conclusion.
And I'm not telling David his business, he knows it far better than I do, but, you know, I'm a 48 Section 6 guy that understands grandfathering and to go, the protected, so just this document, there's a lot to this document to really back up the fact that this document is real and correct.
Yes, if I had, if I had done that letter, I would have researched the title to all the deeds to that property, the deeds to the adjacent property, going back to the common ownership. And then I would have reviewed when it came out of common ownership and I would have looked at the zoning bylaw and made a determination of what the zoning was at that time, so...
So what is your liability, as an attorney, what is your liability with this piece of paper? Does that mean I go after your insurance if in fact I find out you're not...
It is?
Well, I don't know what the, I don't know, I don't know what the liability would be. It'd be the town's, town's, probably, I guess, you know, I don't want to say it'd be your law license, but, you know, you're certifying that you've done the work, you're making a certification, that lawyer's making a certification.
And they have cause of record to be alone, never held in common since 1965 when they changed. I just didn't even know that a document like this really existed.
That's what the town, that's the town...
Is this made by an attorney? This isn't a state or a local form?
Yes, it is, it's a Town of Mashpee form, look at the top.
So, David, do you know who created this form?
It's been around, it's been around before, right? But, um, that is, if, could you let him present this?
Yeah, yeah.
File, because that is not, has anything to do with this denial. But you can go ahead.
Well, one of the reasons for denial was under Section 174-17, which is the non-conforming structure, and there's no structures on the property, so I don't know how the commissioner could deny the project based on 174-17. It's a buildable lot. So, if the question is simply about the 80, the accessory apartment...
Oh, all right, so, all right, I guess, is that... I mean, I denied, let me read into the record where I denied the permit, because this has been, all right, I denied this application, the application 109 301 for the above address for the following non-conforming use reasons that are presented in the proposal. And one was 174 25A1.
Which is the single-family dwelling, detached dwelling.
I mean, I, yeah, and 125A15, 125, 17417, and 174 45.4. Okay, the, this has been a very, very frustrating application. I never disputed that property. The board should know, and I don't know if even you know, Chris, but this application, this, the first permit that was applied, this neighborhood is in Mashpee Neck. Every house around it is, say, about 2,000 square feet, less than 2,000 square feet. He's, the first application applied to this was appropriate size for a single-family dwelling. It was probably around 2,000 square feet. I issued the permit. So I'm not saying that this is not a buildable lot.
Right.
That's not my problem at all. So, I issued the permit for a single-family dwelling at around 2,000 square feet. The applicant wanted, the applicant from there changed it. All right, so he withdrew the application because he wanted to put in a different application. So, what's appropriate in this neighborhood is, like I said, around a 2,000-square-foot principal dwelling. Now he puts in an application for a 2,000-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. There's a huge difference between a principal dwelling at 2,000 square feet and an ADU at 2,000. So, in other words, he, if I can go back to this, back to this letter I wrote, I cited the four reasons. I am of the opinion this proposal was conceived under a misinterpretation of the spirit and the intent of the ADU bylaw. In an attempt to conform, in an attempt to conform, the structure is 160... This is the structure which is even more frustrating to me that we got a different proposal from the one I denied. So, the structure is 168 feet long and it's, which is four to five times longer than the average dwelling in the neighborhood. For this reason, I feel proposed structure is detrimental to the neighborhood and should go to the board for a finding. All right, so, but the other, the other things that are not addressed in this rebuttal or this appeal of my decision is the 125, 125A15, which is an assisted living facility, and that's how it was proposed in prior, in prior, this, this, again, this has been a frustrating situation because it changes, the proposal changes every time it doesn't conform, and it hasn't conformed since it started. So I had to, I had to throw my hands up and say, I gotta deny this and you gotta go to the board. So, it's not because of, it's, I feel it's an unbuildable lot. I feel it's inappropriate to be building such a, a, a structure that, at the time, it was, it was merged together and it was, it was billed as assisted living, which is not allowed. Now, even looking at that, that is, what I said, with the principal dwelling, that is two, two principal dwellings on, I don't see it as an ADU at all. I see it as two different dwellings on the same lot, which is not allowed. So it's very frustrating to not compare apples to apples on this situation and not understand why I think that it should be sent to a finding because now you're bringing a non-conforming use into this picture. So I think the finding should be...
Where is it?
The finding should be, it's, I think the board has a right to look, to make a finding that this is detrimental to the neighborhood.
What's the, what's the lot coverage on this?
It complies, it's a...
They're at 20%.
20% and...
And that's suspect.
Does it include...
Does it include a poll?
Does it include a poll?
I believe it does. Yes. Cape and Islands Engineering did the, did the plan, so, you know, they've been before you many, many, many times.
And it's exactly 20%, so we could, we could, we could probably argue that.
But, I get... I mean, it complies, it complies with, it complies with lot coverage, it complies with all your setback requirements. There's nothing non-conforming about this structure other than the lot size. The lot is non-conforming. So, when the commissioner says that it needs to come before the board for a finding, I'd like to know under what provision that is. Because there's no provision in this bylaw that requires me to come before this board for a written finding of substantially not detrimental, more detrimental to the neighborhood on a vacant lot.
Again, it was, it's proposed as an assisted, assisted, assisted facility, and that is non-conforming in this residential neighborhood.
I, I didn't apply for an assisted living facility, I don't know where the assisted living facility comes from.
They got, they got it right in front of them.
Was that the first proposal? Assisted living? Okay.
There's been many proposals.
And I wasn't involved in...
The one I denied is, was a proposal for assisting living facility. So that's, it's tough to, you know, you come up and you say, well, this is non-conforming, it's a different... It's a different proposal from what I... So this became, what's the percentage? Frustrating, and it's frustrating right now even with the appeal because it's not up, it's not convenient.
Right, it's my understanding that, just to clarify, it's my understanding that it was, the previous architect mislabeled it as assisted living, so it's not a commercial assisted living facility. My understanding is, is that the owner of the property would like her elderly parents to live in the accessory. They're over 90 years old, they can't be on two-floor living, and that's why they're...
So they're living the...
They don't live, there's nothing here.
Right.
So they live in a...
So where are the elderly parents gonna live, in the small house?
Right, the accessory...
In the large house.
In the large house, and the, my client, the owner would live in the accessory.
So the accessory apartment is the large house?
No, 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 the accessory apartment is the small house.
Family will live in the small.
But the, the owner of the property would live in that one, her elderly parents would live in the principal structure.
I, I think... How big are these structures? What is the percent size from one to the other?
It meets, it meets the ADU requirement.
That a principal structure was...
40%.
Was permitted, it was permitted without an issue. It was less than 30 days, the permit was, the building permit was in hand and he was already working on the, on the project, and then he withdrew it to become, now to increase the size, keep the principal, actually increase the size of the, of the, of the, of the two structures, they're two different structures. Right now, it's two different structures, but...
They're detached.
He put it in one structure, again, which I, it's too big. The place is too big for the neighborhood.
But that's not a consideration.
Too big for the neighborhood.
It's not a consideration.
I mentioned that to the applicant, and I said, you know, I think, I told him, I think it's detrimental to the neighborhood. And he goes, he goes, why? I go, it's too big. And he said, well, Willbend has houses that big. And I'm, well, you're not in Willbend, again, you just proved my point. This is how this has been going in even this appeal.
But again, the fact, it complies with all your zoning criteria, so the fact that it may be too big is not a consideration, substantially more detrimental...
It's not over the 20%.
Right. Substantially more detrimental deals with...
It's not over 20%, I don't understand how we can say it's too big. I know it doesn't go in line with resident neighborhood, do we have anything in the bylaw that says?
Again, my point is, it was, it's, the permit I denied is for an assisted living facility, okay? And that is, that what makes 117, 174 17 applicable. That's what makes this applicable, but now it's ignored in this appeal, which is very frustrating for me because now it's, it's just brought up like it was never brought up before.
Well, it wasn't brought up, I mean, I certainly understand the commissioner's frustration.
Do you believe that someone did bring it up?
I believe, yes. So it's my understanding that it was mislabeled as an assisted living by the architect.
So somebody said to our zoning enforcement officer that it was gonna be an assisted living facility? And if they hadn't said that, what would you have done?
And then even to go further, the house, the main house is probably, I don't know, 6,000 square feet. It's supposed to be, you know, made a handicap accessible with a full basement with no lift or anything, which is a hypocrisy. I mean, it...
That's what would have been an assisted living facility, you mean?
Well, that's what the house, the house is supposed to be accessible, but it's got a full basement with stairs. So that doesn't make any sense.
So turning that page, let's just try and turn that page. So the application that's in front of you now for a building permit, let's just say that it is an assisted living and it meets all the criteria of the zoning, what do we do at that point? Let's just say it's not an assisted living. And it meets all the criteria of zoning that Christian states, stated...
Well, we're appealing that, but we're ignoring it, I mean, I don't understand.
Well, I guess the only thing I can...
I don't understand how...
Right, well, again, I never, and my, when I came into this, I was never under the impression this was an assisted living facility, so I didn't raise it because, you know, it's...
Did you know that he had a permit?
I...
That's tough, that's tough, Chris, man. He got a permit for this property and then you're telling me, I'm saying that it wasn't buildable. That's, where are we going with this?
Right, well, again, when you put a, when you put a denial based on 174-17, and maybe an assumption that was incorrect on my part, you're talking about written findings for substantially not, more detrimental. That's not the finding, that's not a finding you would need on a vacant lot. So I turn to the non-conforming lot issue and that's why I raise it up as a buildability issue. If it's not a buildability issue, that's, that's fine. You know, I guess the question becomes, you know, and again, I wasn't involved at the beginning of this process, so I don't, I know it's gone through different machinations. You know, it's one of two things, either we can bring this proposal back before David and have him either approve it or deny it, and then go from there.
Well, the thing is, I don't want to be back in this circle again. I mean, give me something that is, is, that blends with, that blends with the neighborhood. Now, they get the permit, they clearcut the whole thing, the neighborhood was, the neighborhood was complaining week one on this, on this project. And that's with, that's with a normal house, that was with a normal-sized house. Now, it's, they've been complaining ever since about the clearcutting and there's a massive hill there, I've been getting all kinds, it's been total disregard for the neighborhood and for the town bylaws, if you ask me.
Right, but again...
They have two elderly people.
Again, normal size is not a criteria for this board. Does it meet the zoning setbacks, does it meet the lot coverage? And it does.
If it's, if it's detrimental to the neighborhood, that's, that's what's before the board.
Who decides what's detrimental?
The board.
But again, what bylaw provision are you asking me to, asking this board to rely on to make that determination?
Under, under 17, 174 17.
But there's no structure, 174 17 deals with non-conforming structures and uses, there are no...
It's a, it's a non-conforming use with the, with the...
Assisted living.
It's a non-conforming use.
Is there any way we can...
So that's applicable under the non-conforming use.
Is there any way we can work through this? Because it would seem to me, you're standing on legals, I get it, I get it completely, and I understand where David's coming from. I kind of wish there'd be a way to get this together, because frankly, I don't want to see town council getting more work.
Right. So I guess my only suggestion might be, is that we bring this, we, I don't want to withdraw the appeal at this stage, but maybe continue this appeal, bring this, bring a final proposal before the building commissioner.
That is not gonna be an assisted living.
That is not gonna be labeled as assisted living facility, and let him make a determination.
That's not fair.
So whether that, I, I... So whether that, I, I, believe me, I know there have been different plans that have, it was detached, it was, it was attached.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many proposals were given to David?
One.
How many?
Tim, why don't you say?
Maybe how many were discussed?
Because he approved one, now he has a new one.
Did, did somebody? Did somebody present three or four proposals and say, pick one?
Well, no, I, my understanding is, and Tim Brunel was the, is the project manager on this. So, Tim, you correct me if I'm wrong, based on, my understanding was, there was. What, an original plan that David approved for a permit?
Correct.
There was a detached, two detached structures with the pool in the middle.
Correct.
And was there a combined structure with a pool on the, on the side, so.
Correct.
I don't know if there was anything else.
That's strange, though, Bob.
Again, the, the calculations were way off on the ADU, the sizes, it's, it's been, it's just like, it's just, yeah, 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 yeah.
But the proposal that, this proposal that's here right now, if we presented this to the building commissioner, it meets all zoning requirements, and the ADU bylaw talks about a forty percent. And that's what's met on this proposal.
So what you're saying, you're trying to tell me that I should issue that proposal by right and ignore the whole neighborhood?
Oh, that's what, I don't mean to dismiss anybody, but that's what by right means.
Right, exactly, you're putting me in a tough position.
I understand, but again, you know. But that's what by right means.
Everybody's in a tough position, that's why I kind of hope that everybody can work it out on a level to be up before this board, and meet and try to get somewhere in the middle.
Well, I think what would make sense to me.
Can you make a smaller house?
How about that?
No, I, I think, I think I can appeal, I can deny it because it was, that, that initial permit that was approved is smaller than the ADU.
Okay, so I guess, what, I guess what I would, if this is not the proposal that, because this is the proposal that I was going off of for the appeal. So if this is not the proposal that David appealed, then I would suggest that we bring this proposal for his approval or denial.
Well, I'd like to shortcut that proposal.
Okay.
David, if they were to bring that proposal right there to you, and I'm putting you on the spot and I apologize before I do it. But there's no, if we're going to go to war, I guess, right, I mean.
But I don't, I'm not looking to go to war, but.
I don't want to either, I mean, I frankly don't want to spend any more, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that scenario either, but it's sounding like to me, guessing, I'm not, you know, I'm not positive, but it seems to me if you bring that proposal to the, to the, you know, David, I'm not so sure, it sounds like he's going to say no.
Right, and that I, I'd have to come back before you and make this argument, that it's completely complies with all of your zoning bylaws.
It means setback to me.
And I understand, and I understand where you're coming from, and so all of a sudden it goes, if this board chooses to say no to that appeal, and we uphold his right, meaning his decision, then it goes wherever you choose it to have it go.
So what I would have, what I would suggest then, again, I would put this specific proposal before David, and have him approve or deny it, and if it, if he denies it and it comes before this appeal to the board, or I'd rather get town council involved now than get town council involved after a denial by this board.
David, would you be willing to reach out to town council?
Let me interrupt for a second. Is there any way we can kind of negotiate this? Can you make it smaller? Have you seen the letters written to the town?
I have not seen any, I have not seen any public comment on this project.
It's not good.
Okay.
And you're upsetting the entire neighborhood. I don't know if that's your plan.
May I speak?
Go right ahead.
I haven't given my name, Timothy Brunel. Timothy Brunel, I am the contractor.
Okay.
At the beginning of this process, I did go by and I stopped and I spoke to all of the neighbors, which, who were abutters, gave them all my card, let them know what the plans were, and as the building commissioner said, the plans did need a revision because there was a family issue. So my client needed to increase the size of the home so that she could facilitate her elderly parents, one of which is in a walker and a wheelchair. So that's the need for the larger, single-family structure, all on one level. And I've talked, I've been in the neighborhood, I stop by, I drive through every day to check on the project, and I've talked to a lot of the people that were in the neighborhood. And they've all had my card, so nobody's contacted me or said anything detrimental, with the exception of one of the gentlemen that's here, he complained about the big mound of dirt in the, in the, on the, on the lot. And I said, well, I mean, I don't have any of the equipment to remove the dirt, we're waiting for an approval for the building because we're going to use it as loan for the property. And I apologize for the miscommunication with the building commissioner, but I was trying to bounce non-official plans off of him, to try to work with, you know, the building department. And then I finally was able to submit a plan which was conforming, you know, as far as I was concerned, and he denied it. So then I consulted with Mr. Crane, and here we are now. But we tried to work with everybody, you know, I've, really, I've reached out.
Sharon, would you read the two letters?
All right, this one is from Sandy Phillips. It's dated nine twenty-sixth. It's to Mary Ann, attention, oh. Hello, I would like to express my concerns regarding the building plans for the houses planned for Sixth Jacobon Road. The style of house does not match the neighborhood or the surrounding areas. Our neighborhood has a lot of natural wood, which were incorporated on most of our lots. My neighborhood, including myself and family, love all the woods and natural beauty of greats. Our homes are all Cape style, designed varying in different sizes. An ultra-modern home design has no place on Jacobon Road. I have included Google photos of our neighborhood, which include pictures of some of the homes on Jacobon Road. These homes are a good representation of the types of style of homes in the neighborhood. The first picture is an aerial of the road itself with Sixth Jacobon noted. Please notice all the trees around the neighborhood. Unfortunately, Sixth Jacobon has been clear cut to the dirt after this aerial picture was taken and is currently a huge eyesore for the neighborhood. See pictures two and three.
Please.
Please take this into consideration on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, when this goes before the town. I have another letter dated September fourteenth from Ed Phillips regarding Sixth Jacobon Road. Hello, I am writing to tell you about the situation on Sixth Jacobon Road. Our neighborhood is heavily treed and adjacent to the Mashpee Woodlands. I was very upset when the clear cut, they clear cut the lot at Sixth Jacobon Road. There was no concern given for the neighbors, the character of the area, and the ecosystem. I wrote in a complaint to the building department at the time. Unfortunately, if a builder has a permit, apparently they can destroy all the old growth trees. The damage was already done in a very stagnant state of affairs. I am now learning that the builders attempting to put two homes on one lot by pushing the limits of an accessory dwelling. In addition, the plans appear to be ultra-modern design in a vast contrast to the existing neighborhood. If my work schedule allows, I'm hoping to attend the meeting on September twenty-eighth. Not sure if I can attend or how the meeting works. So I am attempting to voice my concerns ahead of time to avoid a bigger eyesore than has already happened. Sincerely, Ed Phillips, twenty-five Jacobon Road, Mashpee.
And I don't dismiss the comments from the, from the public, but again, some of those comments, you know, tree cutting, aesthetics, they're not, you know, they're not zoning board concerns, you know? A modern style house versus a Cape style house, it's, you're not an architectural review committee.
I suppose. Right, is there any concern whatsoever with the neighborhood? Do you have any concern?
Well, I mean, given the letters, I, I certainly would talk to my client about whether or not, you know, they can, you know, whether they can bring something back before, you know, David and the, the neighbors.
And I suppose, if we, if, to answer your questions, if, if, if that was to me, I would, I would say that's two, two dwellings on the same lot.
All right, well, I'll tell you what, there's five people that have been waiting here for two hours to talk.
Right.
So why don't we give them a shot?
Sure.
We'll continue. Anybody in the audience have something to say? Come right up, give us your name and address. Have your say.
My name is Margaret Marston, I live at sixteen Jacobon Road. I've lived there for more than thirty years, so I'm kind of familiar with the neighborhood. I did speak to Mr. Brunel when he first came to the neighborhood, and he told me that, oh, he doesn't like where he's living in New Seabury, there's too many trees, so he'd like to be a little more open than what he was. He never explained that he was going to put that on that lot, never once said something similar to that. I pulled property record cards for twenty-one of the properties surrounding the area, and I came up, averaged lot size, house size in this area was a little over fifteen hundred square feet, a little less than what David said. And as Sandy said, every house in that neighborhood is either Cape or Ranch. That's it, and some of them are only like five hundred square feet, they're tiny. This is dwarfs, anything in that neighborhood. And the plans I saw very briefly at the, talking to them, and what I saw, I think it was three bedrooms in the large house and two in the small house, that's a five-bedroom septic system in an area that's already in a lot of concern for septic. I mean, that's one of the first areas being concerned, they want to put the sewer in because it's, Papa Nessa Bay, Shusdring Bay are having problems already, and this, more housing in that size, it, it, not even close to what's there now. And it feels like we were bamboozled, I don't know how to say it any better, like, oh, I want a nice home here, blah, 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 and not that. I mean, if you want to build like New Seabury or Willow Bend, then that's where you need to go. Not where we are.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I, if I could just, it was, it seems to me I need to summarize this, and, and I've been on, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize he was coming up, I apologize.
Thank, my name's Ed Phillips, that was one of my letters. I'm glad I'm able to be here, thank you. That little tiny thing there was what the original plan was. Because I actually walked over and looked at it, because I'm curious, it's my neighborhood, I want to know what's going on. Right after that was, that whole lot was leveled, just leveled, all these old growth trees. And that was the permit, right there, that little structure right there. This is Mashpee Woodlands, the other side of this woodlands is Mashpee River. The end of this street is the San Tuit River. All the natural vegetation here is totally wiped out for this monstrosity. Cape style house, Cape house, Cape house, my Cape house. So there's no concern at all given to ecosystem. The next storm that comes through, which might be in a couple of days, it's going to hurt my neighbor here, 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 and here. Because all that natural vegetation, it would have blocked the wind and the rain, and the water going both ways is now destroyed. And it's too late to change that, but we can stop this monstrosity from coming in the neighborhood because it doesn't match anything there, and it's way out of scale and size. And doesn't the primary resident have to live here? The person that owns the house, isn't this secondary? Secondary in scale and size? And even looks, shouldn't it match it? Shouldn't it have one driveway? Thank you. Thank you very much. The damage on ecosystem is already done, I hope this doesn't happen, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I've been on both sides of this fence, and I've been an applicant before in this type of scenario, and I can say that, I would say, recommend the following. Chris, seems to be you're saying that this application that's presented on that board right there meets all the town's rules and regulations, zoning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
The structure, in my opinion, the structure meets all of your zoning criteria, it meets all the setback requirements, it meets the frontage requirements, and it meets the lot coverage requirements. The only thing that it's non-conforming is lot size. But again, if we're not disputing the buildability issue, it's not an issue.
So that being said.
I feel that it's consistent with the ADU bylaw.
Well, I'm not asking whether it's consistent, the question is, is does it meet the, the specific outline of the AD, of the bylaw? That's the question.
The way the ADU bylaw is written, it says that it must be consistent with the following, and I'm saying it's consistent. The only thing that it deviates from is the two curb cuts, but it's my understanding that that has, that was approved prior, previously.
But you, so go back, so you had stated just now that there are a couple of things that it may not be consistent with.
No, one thing.
And that's just the curb cuts?
That's just the curb cuts.
Nothing else?
There's one other thing, Chris, and it was just brought up tonight by you, and then by that last gentleman, that the main dwelling is not occupied by the owner.
I don't think the main dwelling, as long as the principal owner, as long as the owner lives on.
I read it. The main dwelling has to be occupied by the owner.
And you just said that it wasn't going to be.
And you said it was not.
My understanding was that it was going to be occupied by the, the family, but.
I know, you said that in your write-up, but then you said earlier, when you had this conversation with the other gentleman.
I mean, I guess that is something.
That the older couple was going to live in the main dwelling, and that the owner was going to live in the accessory dwelling unit.
Right, Section A does require that, and that, so if that is the requirement, then that would be what needs to be done, and it's monitored by the building department. So.
Again, I see.
So the way you stated it, you can't do it.
Correct.
Correct, but the way he just stated it is, is he's, he's corrected that, and he's going to say that it's correct, and just oversee it by, from the building department.
And that's the way it works, I mean.
So we're going to play a word game here.
No.
But I mean, that's the way, I mean, I don't know the way to say it, I mean, if, if the principal, if the owner of the dwelling is required to live in the principal dwelling, then she will live in the principal dwelling.
The square I'm trying not to land on, Mr. Chairman, is as follows.
This is so.
Is that if this goes to court, then it's going to be a remand, and then we're going to be looking at this whole thing over again, getting maybe something similar to that. Maybe, I don't know, and I don't want to be in a remand, I don't want to be anywhere near that. I'd rather work it out here, okay, and figure out something that works hopefully for everybody, so that we're not going to court and getting a remand.
I don't, I don't disagree with any of that statement.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
So, so is there a way that you could be?
Maybe you can work with the neighborhood, maybe you can work with David, maybe you can work around the owner living in the main.
I mean, it's, it's.
Come on.
No, 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 I.
There are ways to work these things out.
Yes.
We can work this, this board, I'm sure, I have no problem voting in favor of David's denial, so if it goes to court, it goes to court. As you know, the only one that's going to make money, that's you.
Right.
And, and that's not the way you do business, I, I get it, my point is this, just work it out, please.
Okay.
I don't want a remand.
I don't either, and I don't, what I would suggest to the board is that we simply continue this hearing to allow me to consult with Tim, consult with David, and the neighbors if they'd like to be a part of it.
And consult with the neighbors as well.
And see if we can come up with a plan that will satisfy everybody.
And try and come up with something that might satisfy, maybe not everybody, but a lot more than tonight, and help us avoid having to get town council involved before we have to make a decision.
Correct, I'm happy to do that.
So would you like to extend?
Nobody likes these word games. Oh, you know, I'll do this, I'll do that. No, she's going to live there, no, she'll live here. It's not, yeah, it's an accessory apartment, I mean, it was assisted living first.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't the one that made it.
What's going on here?
I, I think, I think it can work out, I really do.
I do, too.
I agree.
Be creative like your father would have been.
I, I've heard, I've heard the board, I've heard the board.
I know, I retract that.
Would you like to continue to August twelfth, October twelfth?
Yes, I would.
August twelfth next year?
No, I think October twelfth might be too quick, no?
I would ask for it to continue to October twelfth at this stage, and let's just see what we can do.
Ron, would you make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant of Sixth Jacobon Road, Chris Crane's request for an extension in reference to the filing of the appeal of the building commissioner's decision under Mass General Law, Section A forty, section, chapter forty-eight, Section eight and fifteen, until October twelfth. Correct?
Thank you.
Okay, Jim Seconds, Jim, how do you vote?
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And I vote. Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, have a great night.
Thank you.
The October twelfth meeting is at the library.
Bring your library card, you can't get in.
I gotta tell you, I don't like that at all.
I don't like that at all.
I know, maybe improve. I don't like that at all.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move to approve the meeting minutes of September.